...with because he's probably the only other person that was here at that time. Sorry, I missed it. Next, management. If you turn to the next, I pointed out the page that we had, and you will see under general assistance, asylum, petty, visa holders, the substantial difference. 2011, 195 places, 550. 296 persons, individuals, 970 by 2014. That explains why we're an outlier. Next question. We are charged with mismanagement and said that the city was not properly managing the funds and that we were being too generous with state funding for the general assistance program. If you turn the next two pages, and you'll see, May 2013, this letter is to acknowledge receipt of the review of your town for Portland. The review indicates that your program for the town of Portland is in compliance with general assistance statutes and Department of Health and Human Services general assistance policy. May 2013, same letter, May 2012, same letter, April 2011, same letter, April 2010, same letter, May 2009, same letter, March 2008. We are not mismanaging the program. We are in compliance with state statute, with state regulations, and there's been no indication in previous, current or previous audits that there has somehow been mismanagement on the behalf of the city of Portland in terms of the general assistance program. We are not any more generous than any other city in the state of Maine. If you went to Fort Kent, if you went to Kittery, went to Melanocke, or if you went to the town, city of Westbrook, you would get the same benefit in Portland as you would get in those towns. More recently, there's been an audit that has captured everybody's attention, talking about people that have $20,000, $30,000 and are staying in emergency shelters in Portland. We have been following for the last 20 years state statute on presumed eligibility and have followed management guidelines by the Department of Health and Human Services and managing our shelter. But even without the state assistance, two years ago, we instituted intensive case management program that requires people after they stay in the shelter for seven days to engage with the case manager. Last two years, we have increased by 45% the number of people that we found permanent housing because we've had best practices in regards to case management. But last year, we had an audit. There were questions in that audit similar to the audit we had this year. We wrote a response to Department of Health and Human Services in April of last year. You have a copy of that letter here. We have not yet, not yet heard a response from the Department of Human Services to the audit questions that were raised in 2014. We're more than happy to work with Department of Health and Human Services, more than happy to work with the administration to address those audit issues if they are willing to come to the table and have a discussion with us. Lastly, Senator Hamper, thank you for the prodding. But lastly, I'm going to say to you what no other person today has said to you, and I'm the only person that will be able to say this to you. This may be the most important decision that you make this legislative session about general assistance, and I'm going to tell you why. Since June of last year, we have not received one dollar in reimbursement from Department of Human Services for our general assistance expenditures. We are down between $5.5 billion and $6 million in the city of Portland that we would get in reimbursement that we have not. By the end of this fiscal year, June 30th, we will be down somewhere between $7 and $8 million and not receiving general assistance reimbursement from the state. That means we can only draw upon our reserve account in order to make up that deficit. We have consulted with our bond council twice, and they have told us this will affect our bond rating if we have to use our reserve account to cover operating expenses. And if our bond rating is affected, it affects surrounding communities that many of you are surrounding Portland in terms of what your bond rating is going to be. So you have the financial center of the state that produces incredible amount of jobs, taxes, and other economic vitality for the state that is now in financial jeopardy because our bond rating could be affected because the state has been unable to reimburse us any of the money that they owe us for general assistance. So I ask you today for your help in getting, making a decision that will remove this uncertainty for us now and into the future, because if not, the economic future of Portland could be placed in jeopardy. Thank you. I appreciate your time, and I am sorry, Senator Valentino, for excited time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Brennan, for being here. I have several questions. You were going very quickly at the end, I think, so we could block. One is that you said that you have not received any general assistance money from the state?
Any reimbursement since July 1st of last year?
Since July 1st, okay.
The fiscal year.
And is the state obligated to reimburse you to that? Is there something like a claim or something? I'm just thinking, is this an obligation that we have laying out there that if you prove that you were entitled to that general assistance, we have to pay you back? Is that something we need to budget for?
We believe that we're, we have spent it appropriately. Obviously, there's a suit going on at this particular point. Last June, the governor issued a directive saying that if a community chose to provide general assistance to asylum seekers, visa holders, or folk people who are not documented, that they would not reimburse municipalities that chose to do that. In addition to that, the governor went further and said if you did do that, they would withhold reimbursement for anybody that applied for general assistance and was eligible. We are the only city that we know of in the state of Maine that that directive has applied to exclusively. Bangor has gotten reimbursement, Lewiston has gotten reimbursement, and as far as I know, every other community in the state. So even the reimbursement that we have sent for people that are citizens of Portland, we have not been reimbursed for. For reimbursement, we've asked for for people who lived in other parts of the state of Maine, we have not been reimbursed for, and certainly we have not been reimbursed for people that have settled in Portland from other countries. So we've gotten no reimbursement.
Okay. Just to put back, you have a lawsuit going on now asking for that reimbursement?
Well, Maine Municipal Association has a lawsuit. We are partying to that lawsuit with Westbrook. But Westbrook is still being reimbursed, Bangor is, as I said.
If you're successful in the lawsuit, then we would have to pay you back the reimbursement, and how much is that amount?
Well, as I understand it, the judge would then order the state to pay the reimbursement to us, and the total amount of that would be close to $8 million.
$8 million?
$8 million, which would be by the end of this fiscal year in June.
By June 30th?
Right.
Okay. And just, and you're saying that this letter that you sent, you've never heard a response back?
We have not.
Is that correct?
That was April a year ago to the previous audit that was done where issues about presumed eligibility and other things were raised. I gave you a copy of the letter. We have not received a response back from the department to that letter. And so the most recent audit that was just done, where it was a little bit more inflammatory, we are now in the process of responding to that audit. And again, we're more than willing to work with the department if we could engage them in a discussion.
Thank you.
Representative Torres? Thank you very much. Thanks for being here, Mayor. I'm glad you're here. I'm glad you're here. Thank you for bringing me here.
We just wanted to talk to you, sir.
That's right. But the state's failed to pay its bill. That's basically what we've got here since July 1st. And I guess that surely the combination of that, the amount of money being involved here, I would think that the DHHS people would be very eager to talk with you and try to sort this matter around. Have you contacted them at all recently in terms of, in response to the most recent audit and figured out a way of sitting down with them and talking with them?
Well, I called the governor a week ago and told him that we needed to try to sit down and have a discussion about this, and it looks like we may have a meeting with the governor and with the commissioner at the end of this month. So it took about a month to do that. I just saw Commissioner Mayhew out in the hall before I came in, and I told her it'd be great if we could sit down and have a discussion, but she seemed to be going in a different direction than I was.
So you're waiting another month to even talk to them about this critical issue that's spreading the whole?
That's correct.
Thank you.
That's correct.
Senator Gates?
Thank you, Chairman. Welcome back, Mayor. I just want to tell you, we've heard from a lot of people with different backgrounds and education levels from various countries. And one of the things I get to do is sit here next to the chairman, is the city's side and chief. I want to tell you that out of the 72 people, Mayor, you have the worst hand right now.
Well, Senator, I hope you appreciate this, but that was eight years of Catholic education and my penmanship was pretty good until that nun hit me right in that handbag. And I've never been able to grasp the pencil in quite the appropriate way yet.
Maybe that's why Jewish people have, that's going to handle it.
Well, my wife is Jewish, and she tries to help me out with those things, but obviously not that successful.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Representative Brennan?
I have a couple of questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mayor Brennan. We heard some statistics earlier comparing poverty levels, and I know you addressed that a little bit, and there's some stuff in here. A lot of the folks who testified today and a lot of the folks who you are talking about here, do they actually even appear in your census figures for the city of Portland when the census is taken? Are any of these people counted actually?
Well, I believe they do, but that's an excellent question. I don't definitively know the answer to that, but I think they do simply because we are able to, we roughly estimate that about 85% of people living in the city of Portland are white, another 15% are people of color, and about 7% are black, African-American. We have 4% Asian and 2% Native American, 4 or 5% Hispanic. So I'm guessing in order for us to have that type of breakdown, it probably is within the census track that we would have that information, but I can certainly get back to you on that to be sort of. 37% of the students in our school system, 37% are students of color. And in one school district, one school, we have 10 to 12% that are Asian students, which is very unusual for the state of Maine. And as I'm sure you know, 95% of the state of Maine is white, and to have 37% of our students be students of color, it certainly has added to the school system and certainly has been a tremendous aspect. But again, you can recognize the disproportionality of that relative to the rest of the state.
I'm guessing from your presentation and all the things that you've said here?
People guess all the time from my presentation.
They do, yeah. Well, I guess guessing isn't the best word. You've been very, very upfront about the fact that you feel that your city is basically under attack here for what you're trying to do to meet the needs of people who present to you. How do you feel about, I was just reading, taking a look at this article that you attached, and I've read this article before. How do you feel about your tax dollars being used to trash the city of Portland on Twitter accounts and things like that? I'm just curious about that.
Well, Representative, I appreciate the question and thank you for the question. I feel that the city of Portland has been misrepresented and treated unfairly in this whole discussion. We have been desperately trying over the last 25 years to develop the system to address the needs of people that have a number of different difficulties from mental health to substance abuse to employment issues. And if you look at the history of this, what you see is the evolution over time of the state and the city trying to arrive on policies and procedures about how to run an emergency shelter, who's eligible, who isn't eligible, and how we run the general assistance program. So I'm dismayed by the coordinated focus on the city of Portland, the discussion about us being an outlier, and I in particular take umbrage to the fact that there's an indication that we're mismanaging the program and that we're doing something that is inconsistent with Maine statute or the intent of the legislature. And I don't think that there's any evidence to support that. So it is a distraction when people start talking about poverty rates between different communities because it's not relevant to what is happening. And what I've tried to explain here is we have a very clear understanding and a very solid explanation to give to you why our general assistance expenditure is disproportionate to other parts of the state. Now, whether or not you agree with that, whether or not you think that is appropriate, we are following state statute as we understand it and that has been endorsed by the Department of Health and Human Services consistently for years. So I think it's unfortunate that so many people have to come up here, and there are many people sitting in this audience because of this discussion, they don't know next month whether or not they're going to have a place to stay. And if the legislature acts on the governor's proposal in combination with us not being reimbursed, there'll be 970 people from the city of Portland that will not have housing and will not have food by the middle of the summer. Now, many of you know that's a whole town in the state of Maine if you have 970 people that are going to lose their housing and become homeless. That's a whole town. So this is, that's why I say this is very serious to us in terms of the social consequence of what the discussion has been. And as I tried to point out to you, not only is there a social consequence, the financial consequence is significant not only to the city of Portland, but to the entire state of Maine. So I appreciate your question and--
Representative Teane?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for what you're doing. We've heard a lot of testimony today, and one of the things we've heard on your testimony was that general assistance is entitled program. So again, you meet the requirements you're supposed to get. And the other thing that we heard testimony about in this brief agreement here with the statute is that general assistance is supposed to be a partnership between municipalities and the state, particularly the Department of Health and Human Services. So I understand your testimony about the impact that, you know, what you're going through right now, but one of the proposals in the governor's budget significantly changes the way that municipalities are going to be reimbursed for general assistance. And I guess the first thing I'd like to ask you is the budgetary impact of that to your city, but also the ability of Portland to meet its obligations, which is supposed to be doing a concert with the state of running a credible and effective general assistance program.
Right. Thank you for the question. The answer is quite simple. We are required to put in as part of that partnership now about $2.2 million of local property tax money goes into our general assistance budget. That's our requirement before we draw it out to 50% and then the 90% reimbursement. If, in fact, the governor's proposal were to go forward unchallenged, we would be down $6 to $7 million in a $10 million budget. So we'd be basically left with our local share and $2 or $3 million from the state under the 90, 40, 10% rule. So it would have devastating consequences for us if the legislature chose to enact that reimbursement but kept eligibility the same. There is no way in the world that Portland taxpayers could step in and make up the difference for that type of change and be able to provide the type of housing and provide the type of services at this point. There's just no way that we'd be able to do it.
So your choice would be to either raise property taxes to fill that gap or to just not really run a much of a program?
Well, the dilemma that we have faced all along here is that we believe that state statute says that we need to provide services to people based on need. If the legislature does not change that and says you still need to provide services to people based on need, but you dramatically reshape the reimbursement formula to the city, we're in the quandary of meeting that state statute without getting the financial resources from the state to do that. So it totally blocks away from the partnership historically that the state was had with local municipalities for general assistance. I might point out very quickly, a third of the people that we serve are Portland residents. A third are from other parts of the state and other countries, and 40%, as I said, come from other countries. That's why the 90% reimbursement rule was put into place in the late 80s and early 90s because there's a recognition that Lewiston, Bangor, Portland attracted people from throughout the state and sometimes throughout the country, and it was unfair to burden those communities with the sole cost of paying for general assistance when so many of the people they served were not residents of those cities. If the legislature chooses to make decisions about who's eligible, who isn't, what type of reimbursement is going to be available, I might not like those decisions, but those are decisions that the legislature has the authority to make. The worst decision for me would be if the legislature said, here's everybody in terms of the eligibility that they would have that would continue, but we're not, we're going to walk away from the partnership and there's not going to be any state participation in the general assistance program.
So understanding from your previous testimony that maybe in your mind, communication between you and the department hasn't really been so great around this, has anybody from the department, before they released this budget, called you up and asked you the same question I just asked you about the impact of this would be on your program and on your municipal budget?
No.
Thank you.
Representative Martin? Welcome.
Mayor?
Representative Martin, good to see you.
You are correct in terms of the changes that has happened to GAs a number of years ago. I wonder if you could provide us maybe a month, the number of people that are there during the night in the facilities and what communities they come from, and I suspect that there are, many of them come from even my area. Second question, I wonder if it's possible for you to put together information, and that is, if you exclude the immigrants or people who, some people think we should not be paying for them here, and what should be the amount of money that you should be reimbursed for those Maine residents or Portland residents that you have not been reimbursed for excluding those that some people don't want you to cover?
I can provide that information to you. We do have that, and we roughly provide services to about 4,300 people, and if you do the third, 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 40% breakdown, that gives you an idea. But certainly, we think there would be 2/3 of the people that we do serve that would be eligible excluding the persons that you mentioned.
Thank you.
Representative Suck?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for winding your way up here.
I do know, I do know the way to get there.
Yeah. I'll preface my question with a statement that I'm a resident of Portland and proud of it, and I'm proud of the work that many people in the city, in city government, and in the public and private sectors in the community have done to try to understand and address the issues of homelessness and poverty and helping people who are stricken with chronic persistent mental illness and other issues that make life difficult. And I wonder if you could talk a little bit, and I really, it frustrates me no end to the implication that somehow the formula that exists now incentivizes the city of Portland to spend more money on the general assistance program. It leaves me speechless. But I want you to talk about, if you would, for me, is the larger picture of how the city approaches helping people find pathways to prosperity that we've been trying to create.
Thank you, and I'll try to be very brief and then just go back to Representative Teane's question. We, city council, would be supportive if the state wanted to take over the administration of the general assistance program. The mayor's coalition has supported that, and Maine Municipal Association has supported that, and I think that that's something that the legislature should seriously consider. So we have no invested interest and no financial interest in running a program because somehow it's a cost generated for us or generated for us. So I'll say that. Secondly, and this goes back to the representative's question earlier about what works and what doesn't work, we have a seven-point plan to end homelessness in the city of Portland, and it focuses on intensive case management, on rapid rehousing, zoning changes to allow for more other kinds of housing. We have, we just approved another Housing First program within the city of Portland. But we just got an $80,000 grant to look at a workforce development pipeline, and we are finding ways to have people that are homeless, that are new residents to the city of Portland, get into the workforce. The biggest single complaint we have from employers in the city of Portland is lack of workers. And so if we can take all the people that have come from other countries, all the people that are looking for emergency shelter and they become part of our workforce, that is a net benefit to the city of Portland and to the state of Maine, and that's our economic future. And one of the reasons that we are economically viable and vital as a city is because we have people coming to the city and want to be part of the city and grow. So we look at a multitude of different strategies to provide permanent, our primary goal is permanent housing and employment for people that live in the city of Portland. So we do everything we can after people find emergency shelter to find permanent housing and provide job opportunities.
So would it be safe to say that you're proud of the fact that the city of Portland has a comprehensive plan to try to help the people come to us as a service center looking for assistance? Or maybe the other question is that you're not, it would be safe to say that the city of Portland doesn't look at the general assistance program as a cash cow?
That's absolutely untrue. I mean, it's a constant source of financial issues, and we have to keep constantly coming up to the legislature and say, don't do this, do this, in regards to the financial impact on us. And as I said, it's now caused some financial uncertainty that is very difficult for the city of Portland. At the same time, I believe that as everybody that's sitting around this room, when somebody comes to your city to live or chooses to do that, you want to do the best you can to have them become productive members of the community. You want to find housing, you want to make sure that the children have good education, they have access to healthcare and a job. And we do everything we can, working in partnership with anybody in the partnership with us, to achieve those goals.
Representative Suck?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mayor Brennan. I have a question regarding, I have a question regarding the document here that kind of breaks out the numbers and percentages of asylum, asylees and visa holders or refugees. And so you have the asylees in the first category, so roughly 970. How many of these are refugees that have refugee status?
Well, I'm sorry that we didn't lump those all together, so I wouldn't be able, I could break that out for you at some other point, but we did put asylum, visa holders, and refugees. And Representative Suck, it's a good point because there's a legal status that is different for a visa holder and asylum seeker and a refugee. They do have different legal status, and a refugee actually does have federal money that follows them to their primary place and location. If they go to a secondary place or location, they lose the federal money that follows them. So I'm sorry, if you'd like, I can get the breakdown just of refugees relative to the visa holders and asylum seekers if you'd like.
I would appreciate that.
Okay.
Now, that three minutes, how good was that?
Well, I guess the question is, is how much do I hold myself accountable for going over and how much we're committee question? But Senator Hamper, all I can say is thank you very much for your indulgence and thank you very much for your patience. And since we have been kind of the center of this discussion, I do think it's helpful that we provide much information to you in the committee. I'd be more than happy to come back and work session or some other time to continue this discussion, but I deeply appreciate your courtesy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Colleen?
Yeah. I offered to go first so I could yield some good time, you know, some time to the good mayor of Portland, but I'm following you, so bear with me. Senators Camper, Reiki, Representatives Gutierrez, Tondo, and our full members of both committees. My name is Colleen Hilton, and I'm serving as the mayor of Westbrook out of my third term. I can tell you that listening to the stories today has only given my resolve to be a welcome of community. I know many of these stories, but it's really been something that wasn't due today, and I'm sure it's been a long time ago. I want to speak on to the close changes to general assistance and the eligibility that it will impact on my particular community. And also, there's a constant stream of misperceptions of who gets help from GAs, of how it is never ending and how it's never, a never-checked revenue stream for those who won't work or who are taking advantage of the system. That is not the case in our city, and I know that is not the case in the city of Portland. Westbrook General Assistance Project, 1,880 applications for 325 households in 2014. In total, 589 individuals were assisted in 2014 with resources that allowed them to meet their most basic needs. Of course, the most common age group is in the 26 to 59 head households, but importantly, 95 children under the age of five and 172 children from 6 to 18. Most commonly, the people receiving access in general assistance are either unemployed, underemployed, or receiving TANF or pending a disability claim. Regarding the asylum seekers, we too are seeing a fair share of increase in the city of Westbrook. I was going to put a face on the asylum seekers today, and I had several stories, but I'm going to skip them. They were written for you, but some of the folks that are on here actually were here personally and sharing their story from the city of Westbrook, so I'm going to let their words speak for themselves. And they were very compelling, and I can tell you they were all very true. What I think is common, and I'd like to highlight about all of the stories that I was planning to share, was the deep desire that all of the folks that come to general assistance have in our community, they want a job, they want to work. And if they can't work because of their asylee status, they're begging for volunteer opportunities so they can improve their English language skills. And they want to contribute to the community. They're volunteering in our schools. We have a community center in Westbrook where we have co-located many of our services, and we have a food pantry, a fridge store, and they're volunteering in those places helping our community.
Hillary.
In summary, in Westbrook, we're not providing a handout. We are providing a handout. We know that regardless of the age, the ethnicity, the circumstances of someone's needs, it has been proven time and time again that by connecting to resources within their community, people can regain their self-sufficiency quicker and maintain it longer. We believe in supporting our community, and the return we get back is invaluable. Please reject the proposed changes to general assistance and the proposed changes in eligibility for general assistance, TANF, SNAP, and state SSI in this budget. I thank you for your attention, and I welcome any questions.
Representative Snack has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mayor Brennan. My question is the same as from Mayor Brennan. Of the 320 households that applied for GA, how many, do you know how many group actually refugee status?
Approximately a third. We have a similar profile, just smaller numbers. So next year will just be larger in Portland and larger in Westbrook.
Representative Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You may have just answered my question, but you say that you have a 46% increase from 2013 in the number of applications. Is the same thing driving that as we just heard from the folks in Portland?
It is. It is. And we also have, I mean, I think affordable housing too, so we're seeing more migration housing.
Representative Teague.
Mayor, I just want to thank, and I know you sat here all day today and had to hear these stories, and as I did with some of our own residents, and you have worked hard over the free term to make a level and a welcome and community, and that's a tribute to you and our city council, and the folks in North Bay Area, and Mayor House, and our school committee. We've worked hard on our system, also working with you on that. So thank you very much for being here today. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Mark Swan. And after that, I have Leandra and Deirdre Domi, Bob, and...
I was going to say good afternoon, but I guess I'll say good evening. My name is Mark Swan, and I'm the executive director of Preblel Street, a private nonprofit social service agency. We are faced with increasing needs at Preblel Street that are quite alarming to us. This past January, just a month ago, we served over 34,000 soup kitchen meals just in that one month. 34,000 meals in January. Four years ago, January 2011, we served 22,000 meals. So we've seen more than a 50% increase in four years. The shelter we run for children is full every night. The shelter we run for women is full every night. And one night last month, 382 people showed up to sleep on the floor of the city's Oxford Street Shelter. 382 people showed up. Only 142 of them were able to fit, and they slept on mats on the floor at Oxford Street Shelter. Another, so that forced about 75 people to walk a couple of blocks back to the soup kitchen where they had eaten a couple hours earlier and sleep on the floor there, which left over 60 people with the only option of sitting up in chairs in city offices all night. That's what we're talking about when we're talking about the shelter system in Portland. We fear that these changes, proposed changes to GA will only add to these sad and alarming numbers and circumstances. We can't handle it anymore. We know very well that solutions to the daily tragedies of poverty are complex. There's no one quick fix, but GA is an important piece to this puzzle. Often, it's the only piece of support that's available to people. And we care about families of veterans, people struggling with mental illness, people trying to make new lives here in Maine. It's the last resort for so many thousands of Mainers. Having said that, I've been doing this a long time, and I will tell you, it is an imperfect program for sure. We've long been frustrated by the lack of consistency in how GA is administered across municipalities, so there certainly are areas that GA can be improved upon. One aspect of GA in particular that I would strongly encourage you to look at is, you heard a little bit from Mayor Brennan, and that is to support...